January 21st, 2020. Before we get to the agenda, we did have a bit of an incident here this morning. And so I've asked Jeff Aludo, the county administrator, to give us a little bit of detail and an update on the situation.
Thank you, Madam President. Just very briefly, yes, we did have a fire alarm event this morning that caused the evacuation of this particular building. Was the, there was a motor in the elevator penthouse that burned out that caused smoke on floors eight, nine, and 10 that triggered the fire alarm, also caused some power disruption issues in various parts of the building, some electrical loss in the stairwells, et cetera. So unfortunately, it was also complicated by some tests that we were running on some other systems as well. But at the end of the day, the elevator company has responded, the electricians are on site making the repairs. So the building is fully operational. I think we had one elevator that was still down. But those repairs will get made. There is going to be, we have been operating on an emergency generator in this building. They're going to switch that over sometime soon. So if you see the lights flicker, that will be the transition from the generator power to the normal power. So that's fully expected and anticipated. But everyone is safe, accounted for, and by all accounts, the evacuation procedures went smoothly. So thank you for asking for the update, and I hope this clarifies anything to people who are wondering.
Yeah, that's right. I'm just glad to have missed it. But I know there was quite a commotion outside the building. So there's also a two-alarm fire that is, I think, right now taking place in Lower Price Hill. And I was sitting at a forum just before getting here with the city manager, and he was very distracted by what's going on there. So I think it's evolving, but yeah, there's just a lot of, there's just a lot going on today. So with that, we'll get to our agenda. We have a public hearing related to the Community Development 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan. And Joy Pearson is here. We had some questions at our last meeting, and so we've asked her to come and, you know, conduct this hearing, but also answer some of the concerns and questions that came up at the last meeting. So, Joy, I'm going to leave it to you.
Thank you. The consolidated plan for 2020 to 2025 is our five-year plan for the three annual entitlement grants that we received from HUD. The five-year plan guides the one-year action plan. And every year, we update the action plan and, as well as provide an update, an annual report showing what we've accomplished in the prior year. The grants include the Community Development Block Grant, which is the largest, at $3.3 million. And the second grant is the Home Investment Partnership Program, and it's $1.3 million annually. And then the Emergency Solutions Grant is used for rapid rehousing and homelessness prevention at $280,000 per year. The Hamilton County has 41 local governments out of a possible 47 local governments participating in our program. The City of Cincinnati receives their own grants. So the funding that we receive is used outside of the City of Cincinnati. You can see the listing of the communities that participate in the program. Milford participates with Claremont County. And there are six communities that do not participate, but we continue to meet with them and ask them to join the program. Here's a map of the participating jurisdictions. So the consolidated plan begins with the analysis of impediments to fair housing. The work on that was done last year, and the report was made to the board late last year. And we will be implementing improvements to our programs based on that analysis of impediments to fair housing. We also do a needs assessment for all types of housing, as well as services for people experiencing homelessness, people with disabilities, and other special populations. Lastly, we do a review of all housing and non-housing programs. You can see that our process includes significant citizen participation. We had three countywide meetings in the fall at three separate geographically dispersed public libraries, and had 70 attendees through the course of those three meetings. And this is one of our first public hearings. The second one is on Thursday of this week, to receive feedback from the community. We also had an online survey. The response rate was 315 responses, and we found that, by and large, the priorities that we are funding are exactly what the community is asking us to fund. We also had some social media activity on Facebook. The goals that we've set up for the next five years are the same as the goals we've had the last five years, and that includes eliminating blighted properties, spurring economic development, improving public facilities, improving public infrastructure, improving quality of life for residents, and furthering fair housing, as well as providing and improving affordable homeownership, providing and improving affordable rental housing, and serving homeless families and reducing homelessness. In the 2020 to 2025 plan, there are several new programs. One is set aside for matching funds for a HUD lead pollution control grant with the Hamilton County Public Health Department. The funding would come from HUD. The lead agency will be the Health Department. This is the first time that they've asked for funding, and this would be for testing of children, abatement of lead-based paint hazards, as well as educating the public. The grant is, the request is going to be for $2 million, and over a three-year period. We also will be implementing the community-wide housing strategy that's almost completed, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit. This may include housing plans for communities that are participating in the program at request, as well as some pilot programs that we may include some sort of grant and loan sliding scale program, possibly even a loss reserve program, so that if somebody loses their job or has a medical emergency, the county would be securing their payment of their loan if their income qualified. So it's something we're talking to some of the banks, the CRA officers. Lastly, we've included a Section 108 loan program for impactful community and economic development projects on a much larger scale than our current CDAC program, which provides up to $300,000. We are, we will be presenting additional details and getting your feedback on the Section 108 loan program throughout the year. Basically, we are able to borrow against our Community Development Block Grant at very, very low rates with public bonds through HUD. The budget is broken down for the CDBG program. This is a five-year estimate. We've assumed a flat funding throughout all five years, and we know that the budget for 2020 was passed with a slight increase in block grant, but we're not sure how that would pan out. So right now, the consolidated plan and the action plan include language that if there's an increase, that the increase is applied in categories. So nonprofit services would go up, or the Community Development, Community and Economic Development Assistance Program would go up by that percentage, as well as the community projects. So that's the, that's the way that we have to implement the program for HUD. So we've split the CDBG program. You can see that about 42% of the funding is set aside for community projects, about 23% is set aside for nonprofit services, and 17% for the economic development program, as well as 3% for mini-grants, and then 15% for compliance and administration. The staff here provides all of the compliance for all of the programs, including Davis Bacon, prevailing wage, public participation in legal ads, as well as staying up on the regulations and working with the 41 local governments, as well as the housing developers and nonprofits. The home budget is 100%, I'm sorry, about 90% of the funding is used for competitive projects and programs, and about 10% is used for compliance and administration. I have some information about the community-wide housing strategy that is currently wrapping up. This was a countywide initiative that was led by the Local Initiative Support Corporation, or LISC, as well as the Greater Cincinnati Foundation. And there were six working groups that met over the course of about four months with over 125 participants. In summary, the recommendations, there are over 100 recommendations that are currently in the draft report, and this will be presented to you in February. The overall recommendations, though, are for preserving affordable housing, producing more housing, both market rate and affordable, and protecting our most vulnerable residents, specifically homeowners. These are some sample recommendations from the report for all of the local governments, including the City of Cincinnati, to implement property maintenance and code enforcement programs, to create a robust, adequately funded home repair program, create a system that flags expiring subsidized units and troubled properties, targeting resources to first-time low-income and minority homeowners, and funding legal assistance for vulnerable The last grant is the Emergency Solutions Grant, and the county's portion is relatively small, at $280,000 a year, or $1.4 million over five years. And the majority of the funding is used for rapid rehousing through strategies to end homelessness. The Strategies End Homelessness manages our funds, as well as the City of Cincinnati, and additional funds. The City of Cincinnati's funds for ESG are used for shelter operations. I'm sharing a little bit more detail about the homelessness services that are provided through Strategies. Strategies is one of a handful of unified funding agencies. I want to say it's about nine or 10 in the whole country, and that means that they are eligible for funding directly from HUD. They recently, they've received funding also from the state of Ohio, but they recently received $21.4 million in a competitive process that was announced last week for a variety of programs, which I'll share in a second. The partner agencies, it's a little hard to read, there's a lot of them. They include Shelter House, Center for Independent Living Options, Tender Mercies, YMCA, Bethany House, many, many local nonprofits, Caracol, Interfaith Housing Network, and National Church Residences, and Taubert House. I believe I said them all. In recent years, the Hamilton County has seen a drop in the number of people experiencing homelessness, both in shelter and unsheltered. The, something called the Point in Time Survey is happening this next week, and that is one day a year that HUD requires all participating communities to count the number of people experiencing homelessness on the street or unsheltered. So from 2018 to 2019, that number was reduced by 2%. The Point in Time for this year is happening next week, and overall homelessness has decreased in Hamilton County by 2% from 17 to 18, and 3% from 18 to 19. Statewide, the number of people experiencing homelessness has gone up by roughly 2%. This is a six-year trend in data. I don't have the 19 data in here, but it's through 18, and you can see there's a decrease in the number of households experiencing homelessness, as well as a decrease in the number of children experiencing homelessness. In 2018, you can see the number of people that were assisted with Strategies End Homelessness's funds, including Shelter Plus Care funding. There's, emergency shelter was provided to 6,500, roughly 6,500 people, rapid rehousing to about 3,000, homelessness prevention to 1,000, permanent supportive housing, which is basically a voucher program for folks with disabilities or chronically homelessness. That's 2,500 individuals. I will share an example of a permanent supportive housing project is the 821 Flats Building at Ezra Charles Drive. That's, there's a groundbreaking, I think tomorrow, ribbon-cutting tomorrow. So that's our, some of our funding is in that. We are able to use home funds in the City of Cincinnati for special populations, which has been defined right now so far as just permanent supportive housing, if the city has funding in it as well. So there are no permanent supportive housing projects outside of the City of Cincinnati. So that's why we're able to provide the funding in the City of Cincinnati. The agencies, Tender Mercies is the agency that runs that program. Lastly, about 780 people, individuals received assistance for transitional housing, and street outreach was about 1,000. So the next steps for this process is a public hearing today, as well as a public hearing on Thursday, and then a resolution is going to be before you on January 30th. I will state that many of the programs have competitive funding throughout the year, and that is done with the Community Development Advisory Committee that provides advice to Jeff Aludo, the county administrator, and then the information is shared with the board. So those processes, I'll share a calendar with you as far as the timing of those four different competitive programs.
Great, thank you. I just have one very broad question. When you talk about the individuals experiencing homelessness in the county, and it's a slight reduction, but a reduction nonetheless in that population, I don't know, is there any way to attribute that to any one thing in particular, or is it the myriad of things that are going on in Hamilton County that are contributing to that decrease?
I'm not able to point to something specific, but we do have the benefit of receiving competitive awards at a higher rate than many communities. So I mentioned the Unified Funding Agency, the status that Strategies End Homelessness has, and that really helps because they really know the programs. And there are, they hold, the agency is very accountable to meet the right thresholds and get the data points, so that it makes us competitive to receive additional funding. Two years ago, that amount was 19 million, so it's been increased by $2 million. It's a two-year allotment. So even though $2 million more from two years ago is a significant increase for that funding, but I'm not specifically aware. I think that the focus on homelessness prevention and shelter diversion really helps. So I think the average cost for homelessness prevention is $1,300 a family, when the average cost to help someone out of shelter into permanent housing is $3,600. So it's, that's a very wise investment, the programming.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one quick question. Thank you for all your hard work and your whole team. On page six, you talked about the CDBG budget funding, and if there possibly would be an increase coming through HUD that you guys would decide of those five areas where the money would be put into. And my question is, how is it decided? Is advisory committee, do they look at the additional money coming in, and then they determine that?
Yes, well, one thing, we know there will be a slight increase in 2020 because we have one more additional village that's participating, which is the Village of Glendale. But they have already requested funding, and we have a project in the budget for them. I have a, I've passed out a two-page summary of the budget for 2020. But if there's an increase, say it's a 1% increase, the way that the consolidated plan is written, that the 1% increase would be split among the categories of programs. So it could be that, that one project that's scheduled for 2021 could move up to 2020 if there was like an additional $20,000, or, and that would be, it's sometimes, it's, the communities have already told us that if something can move up, that they would like to get funded earlier. But, but that would be taken to the advisory committee and then presented to Mr. Aludo. And then the other, like, for example, if it was a 1%, then that increase could either go to community and economic development programs, or nonprofit services, or mini-grants. So it would be, we would be strategic about where it's best needed, or most needed, and then have that advice from the CDAC.
Is it helpful for the commission to make any, to be proactive and say that maybe if we got an increase, maybe more community projects should be one of them? Is that helpful for the commission to make any kind of recommendations, or wait for the advisory committee to submit and then see where we are with it?
Well, we would, I would suggest that we present the information to the commissioners, given the context and what's happening with the communities. So it may not, it may be that a community project is scheduled, is not, is not able to move forward in 2020. So we would share that information with you, and of course, take your advice.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I could, just very briefly, and that's typically the way we've addressed it in the past, is if we do get an increase amount, Joy and her staff will come, we'll sit down and look at it in the context of the board's policy agenda, and then I would bring something back to the board and say, this is what we're thinking in terms of a strategy, and get any feedback from the board. So there'll definitely be that opportunity for dialogue, and if, moving forward to the degree there's a substantive increase.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks.
Hi, Joy. So I am looking on page five, under the new initiatives in the consolidated plan. I think it's great that, that there will be loans made out with low interest rate, but I'm wondering, what is the rate?
I think it's too early to say that. What we're hoping to do is partner with some banks, so that we can leverage our funding. So we, at this point, will be discussing different options, and we'll bring that to the board before any project, a program would be implemented. But I'm not sure what the current market rate is. There is a current program called the Home Improvement Program, and that interest rate is 3% below prime. Right now, I don't know, I, we, the program is through Northside Bank and Trust, and originally there were seven banks involved in the program, but the environment has changed. So we basically want to look at what we've learned from that program, and then see what tweaks we can do and what changes to provide additional funding. That program is also open to any homeowner. It's not income qualified. So the program that we would use our funding for would be 80% of area median income or less. And then the home program allows assistance for 60% of area median income or less. So ideally, we would have funding from both sources, so we can, we can leverage our funding in the best way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We do have a speaker's card on this issue, so Joy, if you would stand by. Nick Tolbert is here. Please come forward. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
You know, I don't like to speak on issues I don't know anything about. And last meeting I was here, and being on the street, I see how bad it is. It is bad, really bad. And when I look at numbers like millions throwing around, how about millions? And I look at percentage of 2%, 3%, you can't do business, you go to a corporation, you throw numbers out like that, and millions, and all you're getting is 2% and 3%. You won't have a job. That's for real. I ain't saying you guys ain't doing your job, but you could do a whole lot better than this. Because it, just especially for the men. I can't believe the percentage of men. And that's a study in itself, why are so many men homeless on the street? My company, we're going to be looking into that. Why are so many men homeless on the street? That's a big question. So what I got is questions, a whole lot of questions that need to be answered. When I go to all the Taj Mahal nonprofits, and all of them are clean, they good-looking. I'm talking about, they really nice. And then when I look at 2% and 3%, to me, I think there's something wrong with that picture. I gotta look at this whole thing. It's all looks good. I ain't saying anything is bad, but I think we could do a whole lot better, a whole lot better with the kind of cash you, I mean, you're spending a lot of money here, in a major business. If you spent that kind of money, and you only getting 2%, somebody losing their jobs. You know they are. So all I'm saying is, we got to look at this a little bit better. We got to get some of these people off the street. We really do, and it's bad, it's really bad, and especially for a lot of the men.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, thank you. So Joy, we will have this back in front of us on Thursday for the final public hearing, and we can ask any questions or comments. And I know you've sent out an email to us as well, correct? Yeah, okay, thank you. Just want to refer to that as for a reference point. Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you also, James, the Director of Planning and Development, for joining us today. Our next item is related to kinship care and the HCI, or it's the Ignite Program with JFS. Moira Weir is here with others. So please introduce the team, Moira, and we'll...
I'm with my colleagues from JFS. Linda Hudson and Monica Brown. So we're going to tag-team it, but I'm going to start with, we're going to talk about kinship and all the supports, because when we were in front of you a couple of weeks ago, I think you wanted to have a little bit more information. Just to kind of highlight, we've been working, the team's been working really hard on looking at kinship and how kinship is administered throughout the county. Just to give you a recap of the numbers we talked about last time, in 2017, we had 3,354 children in custody. At the end of 19, we had 2,804, so we reduced that number by 750, which I'm really proud of the folks for working hard on that. The one thing, thank you all for approving the kinship stipend, because that really helped us help. We have 405 families currently receiving the kinship stipend. That equates to 350 children. So that is for, the stipend is per child, for as long as the child stays with that family. And if the child goes to another family while in custody, we would cover the child there too. So again, thank you for that. We also have other great programs that are really helping support kinship, and I'll talk a little bit more about another program, but just to also refresh your memory, with the levy, we are also able to use levy dollars to also help wrap more services around family suffocesses, if they need beds, you know, immediate items before the stipend kicks in, we're able to purchase those. Last year, we spent over $1.1 million to supports for kin, so that kids could be placed with them. Also access the, if a family's eligible for the TANF dollars, which is the, you know, families that are eligible up to 200 or 300% of poverty, depending upon the program, we're accessing those. We make sure we, make sure families are eligible. And then in addition to that, we used about $300,000 funding childcare for families that were over income for the publicly funded. So we really are working hard to make sure that we can wrap services around kinship. Another fantastic program that Monica's going to talk more about is, in 2018, the Attorney General's Office was doing a pilot project, allowing counties, we volunteered to do it. It's called 30 Days to Family, and the goal is really to, anytime we think a child might be coming into custody, to vigorously look to see if there are kinship available that we could access for those, for those families. And there was just a report, Monica's going to talk more about the details, but we just had a report that was released by the folks that are studying the program, and we saved about $1.3 million last year through this program. And Monica's been able to grow the program. The AG's office funded us initially with one program, but then we were able to fund four other positions, which I know you'll talk about, to do the work. But I'm going to let Monica talk more about the great work that they're doing.
Welcome.
My name is Monica Brown. I am currently the supervisor for the 30 Days to Family program in Hamilton County. We took our first case September of 2018. Thus far, we've served 125 children. Of those 125 children, we've been successful with placing 73% of those children with family. The state guidelines are 70%, so we're above the state guidelines right now, so we're doing amazing work. For each child, we minimally touch 200 different relatives. We are hitting the ground running from the first day the child enters the foster care system. We touch not only maternal side, paternal side, anyone that has any blood relation or nonrelation to the child. We're meeting, we're vetting, we're offering supports and services to get the child with these family members as quickly as possible. We have children in Colorado, we have children in Chicago, wherever we can go, we will go. And we've learned with our program that children do much better with family than they do in a foster care system. But with the family, we know there's cases that they're not successful. So upfront, we build a roadmap with these families, and within a roadmap, we're looking for backup options. We're not just finding one family member, we're finding three backup options, just in case it just doesn't work, someone gets sick, they need some supports. We're giving you this roadmap upfront, so that you'll have the supports in place just in case something happens. We know that every family member can't take in the kids, but they can offer transportation, they can help with basketball, they can help with homework, but this program allows for family just to be family again. And thus, I'm very happy with the program. We've had so much success. We've had a case, most recently, there were five children, and those five children, mother lost her life on the highway, and father had just lost his life to cancer about two years prior. So we had no one. It was a 12-year-old child in my office crying in tears, and we sought, and we searched, and we vetted relatives, and all five children were able to be placed, not in the same home, but within family close proximity, so they were able to maintain a relationship. But this program has allotted for that availability for children to be together with family. That's all that I have.
Okay, so we're going to do questions as we go, if you don't mind. Stay right there, stay right there. So, oh, now I forgot what my question was. Oh, I know. So, so, you know, thank you for the work you're doing. We, I think, I speak for all of us, we're delighted to play a part in this with the levy and provide some increased dollars, so these stipends can be available to the families, because otherwise, so many of them really can't take the child in, because they don't have the resources to do that. But you just said something that I've not heard before. So I think we're all familiar with this idea of kinship care, and you look to family first, and you try to place the child. But you just talked about other things that family can do, transport, basketball practice, that kind of thing. So are those relationships outside of the person that's kind of the caregiver, the one that's taking the child in, are you also facilitating other family members, providing some resources or some, some transportation, whatever it is, as the other family member houses the child?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
So you do that as you do the outreach to try to find the home, you're also doing the outreach for the support services?
Yes.
Well, that is fantastic. So, all right, I just had never heard that before. Okay, thank you for that. Any questions or comments of Monica?
Madam President, just an awesome day in Hamilton County. I think about all the families who have wanted to do it, but the burden of being able to afford it, and so they have to maybe let their niece or nephew go to another home or something. So this is just awesome. We knew when we thought of it and it came up that it would be a good thing, but this is a great thing. So just let your staff know, just so excited about the potential, and the numbers are great, and just your passion. So thank you so much for all that your team is doing.
You're welcome.
This is good stuff. And my favorite thing that I heard you say was that you let family be family. That's so wonderful. So thank you for your work. Thanks, Moira.
And I just do want to be clear that the increase to the Children's Services Levy helps facilitate this, but the voters of the county are really ultimately the ones that approved of all this. While we put it on the ballot with an increase, they were the ones that said yes to all this. So I just, I do want to clarify the point. I don't want to take too much credit for this. All right, thank you, thank you so much. All right, thank you, thank you so much.
I do, this is an awesome program, but I want to say, the other staff, whether they're in the ongoing sections or the assessment sections, they also really work hard with families to help them piece things together, even if the kids aren't going into custody, but to help with transportation, you know, to brainstorm those ideas. So that's fantastic, but I want you to know, other staff are really trying hard to do that too, whenever they can, particularly with...
So to clarify that too.
No, she's doing it all.
Yeah, right, I meant like, other staff in the...
As you even work to keep families together before it even gets to the kinship care, so you're doing the same thing to, if a child can stay safely in the home, then you're helping provide services, like transportation and the other things, if that's necessary, as you identify needs, right? Okay, that's what you're...
Right, great, thank you. So they're trying to do holistic throughout the whole organization, yeah. So another great initiative that I think you'd be proud of. So in, but 2018, we were looking at data, in Job, the Family Services, looking at where we saw really high poverty rates. And we honed in on several different areas, particularly the ZIP Code 45225, which we think, I think there are, Lynda will help me, six neighborhoods with the highest ZIP Code, six neighborhoods within that one ZIP Code. But we know the poverty rates were the highest in the county. And we also knew when we looked at our data that we had about, yeah, 4425.
Help us, help us, what neighborhoods?
It's Melville.
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 Village of Roehill. Sorry. That's okay. Village of Roehill, which is 45225, Melville, lower part, not part of Price Hill, but...
Fairmounts?
Fairmount, what is it?
Eastern...
Commissville, and what's the one at the bottom?
Is it the camp?
Northside.
Northside, okay.
It's a split three-mile radius, right? I mean, so it's very small, but we also, when we looked at our data, we knew that 50, no, sorry, 32% were accessing TANF. So we, so this team, HC Ignite, has done an awesome job coming together. They, they volunteered because we want to co-locate them in the community, to really just try to be embedded in the community, build some trust. So I'm going to get Lynda to talk about the great stuff that they've been doing last year.
Hi, I'm Lynda Hudson. I'm just one of the team members with HC Ignite. And we, we have been volunteering with Villages of Roehill, because that's where the majority of our people are. And so we've gone out with Lisa Hyde Miller, who is the manager out there, well, one of the, of the community center. And we help package the food for the weekend, and a lot of times over the break, for the community, they, we bag foods, we've bagged like 3,000 bags sometimes on the weekend. And so we've gone out to help with them. So what we do as case managers, we go out into the field and to the homes of our families, I call them members, we call them families, to do case management for these people. So a lot of them want to go back to school to get their high school diploma, or to get some kind of certification, or some kind of training, to better their lives, to change, you know, their environments and things like that. Today, I had one of my family members just start her STNA class. She was really excited, really charged to do that. One of our other members, her members, she started her class, graduated, and is working. So she's doing her STNA now. We've had another one to go through several different trainings to do her STNA. She's done a couple of other different things. So now she's working at Reece Price? She went to get her training and certification to do that. So now she's making like 15, I think $15.43. So they're working to better them, better their lives, to improve themselves, and just to change their environment, their lives where they are. And we're excited about that, just going out and meeting them where they are. And real excited about that. We also go out to the different collaborative, where we work with CAA, Urban Lead, Talbot House, and do different things with them as well. We also have the Lift Project with Urban, not Urban Lead, I'm sorry, with, I'm losing my train of thought, I'm sorry.
It's just a collaborative?
Yeah, it's just a collaborative. And then we had some training people to go out to the other one, it's, I'm sorry, to do other certifications. So they're all doing well, and we're excited about it.
Wait, you can talk about your great name. So they had, they came up with this great name, the HC Ignite.
Integrative and Grit, Nurturing, Innovative, Transformation, and Empowering.
Oh, no wonder.
No, that was not. I wouldn't have come up with all of that. The team came up with it.
So how long has this program been in place?
We started in February of last year.
Okay.
So we're looking to move out into Melville. We'll be going out into the Melville Rec Center.
Okay.
Soon as they finish getting our home together. So right now, we're housed in 222 on the first floor. But we go out to, in our, in our building across the street.
Okay.
Yeah, but we go out to them.
I've never heard of it like that.
Yeah, 222, East Central Parkway. But we go out to, to our members. We go out wherever they are. A lot of times, they want us, we'll go to their homes, or we meet them wherever they want to meet us. Sometimes we, they'll say, can you just meet me at OMJ? So we'll meet them there. But most of the time, we're in the field, at their house.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No, another great program, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for being here and giving us an update on the program.
And Madam President, I mean, what you said just keeps ringing in my ear about the people of Hamilton County are the ones that made this happen. So our people are keeping families together, so that, we shouldn't take that lightly. We should take credit for it. It's the people of Hamilton County, as you said, that made this possible.
Right. All right, thank you. All right, that completes the two top agenda items. We have a couple of executive sessions. Is there anything to come before the commission, before I move, we go into executive session?
I have nothing.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, the sale of property in competitive bidding, or the sale of other, or other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property. And an executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3, to conduct a conference with an attorney concerning pending litigation.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.